Everyone join us in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. Sunny day. We have another doctor. So I can see we've got two doctors in the house. They can take care of you. We've got Dr. Cursey and Dr. White. Congratulations on the accomplishment. Okay, let's prove the minutes then would be January the 16th, 2018.
So.
Karen?
Second.
Riley? Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone signed in there, Mr. Leavell?
No.
All right, no one signed in to speak today, so we'll go to our reports. First, we have Matt Miller. Matt's going to give us a CTE update. Mr. Miller? For Misses Powell, could you close those blinds behind you, please? Direct reflection off the lid. Is that red card? Line.
I think it's Carol. I'm just sorry.
I think this is.
I don't know.
I think she's getting her leave. I believe her family has come. Okay. Thank you guys.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, let's. I put a bunch of stuff together so you guys will have something on hand as we talk. If you need to refer to it back later, that'd be fine. If you flip to the first page. The students came up with an idea that since we are a simulated workplace environment, that. Wait just a second. Okay.
Morning.
You must probably have been off the street somewhere. Are you ready?
I'm just hopping along.
It's awful get old.
I know, I am ready.
Okay, Matt, go ahead. All right. On the first page right there, as you come into school, we've got a couple of signs we've changed. It's kind of with an idea that since we're a simulated workplace environment, that we should be like most places around and create our own industrial parks. So we are now a camp industrial park. Here in Simulated Workplace. We have the names of our companies on there. For this kind of a little more recognition to make us more presentable as a simulated workplace environment. On the following page, we have our CTE vision, mission, and goals that we're trying to accomplish over there in the background as one of our students that posed for the picture to put this up. So we have our vision, the kids, you know, see that and understand what that is, and the goals and objectives that we're trying to work towards to make our simulated workplace a better place. On the next page, we're looking at a model simulated workplace. I was told back in the fall that we were moving in that direction. And if you look down the list on our simulated workplace there for our school life caution, you will notice that all the ones that are listed are either CTE centers, basically. We're the only true high school that's listed on there. So that's a big thing, accomplishment for us as a whole and not just as a part, the way that I looked at it. Is this statewide, do you think? The, I mean, are these all the schools in the state of West Virginia? There are currently five, and they have added, these 10 are the new model simulated workplaces. So we'll have folks that come and visit from different places to see our simulated workplace in action. We've had multiple visits from the State Department. They've recognized that what we're doing is what we need to be doing to help the kids. And so they've recognized us as representing our facility there as a model simulated workplace. On the next page, we have a, I've got a recent two meeting scheduled coming up on March the 7th. It was all of our schools that are in the recent two area. It'll be our, like, the directors, any administration that's involved with the CTE. So far, because we're looking at us being a model school, we've had Campbell County that sent their welding instructor out to see what we do differently than they have to try to improve their program. We had a visit just recently from Pleasant County CTE, the Center for Public Law Safety Instructor Dam. And he stayed all afternoon with Brian, his class, to see what was going on back there. Upcoming, I've got Migo Central, they're looking to send their CTE business and their automotive instructor down to see what Courtney's doing at her program and Jerry with automotive to make some changes. Coming up in February, we've been invited to send four programs up to the legislature for CTE Day. And that's on the 23rd. As a group, we're trying to schedule maybe a community CTE event, maybe looking at April the 6th. We were looking possibly either that day or the 13th, it's probably going to be more like the 6th now. For that, that's going to involve bringing in business and industry folks, come in and sit down with our kids and meet some of our seniors and have an opportunity for them to showcase what they have and talk to them about maybe possible jobs that's available out there for them. Something new that they, the Department of Ed has changed for us, I think is going to help us is they're going to allow some embedded credit for our CTE classes. And hopefully that'll increase our opportunities for kids to get in for the programs and they can earn some credit. Take additional math class if they need to be, they can also earn math credit from us. They're also looking to try to increase our completion time. I've got a meeting with them, they're thinking about, well, they've actually proposed taking our students instead of doing a two-year program with them, try to do a one-year program with them. That way, as a junior coming in, if they do a program, say welding for that year, but maybe the following year they can go into another program and get it set up like building construction. So when they graduate, they would have two sets of credentials on hand instead of just a one. So that's something that they put out there. I haven't heard a lot about it, but it's something they told me to think about, looking at maybe towards the spring. Actually, I got a meeting in February, hopefully they'll address some of that. Now, something that's not on your paper, I got a call yesterday from Karen Wade, something her and I've been working out. She's with the Department of Labor Office of Friendship Programs. And I talked with her about a year ago and thought up this idea about having our kids do an apprenticeship program. So she got back with me finally yesterday, and she's going to come and meet with me here in a few weeks and see if we can work something out and make a friendship program for our carpenter students and our welding students. And it may be just a pilot program, and if it turns out to be successful, then it's something she may try to present to some other counties to jump on board and do as well. And like I said, I just kind of came about it yesterday. Automotive. And we have several students that finished up their class for West Virginia's inspection now. The seniors, they had an opportunity to go through, we had several that were successful with their ASE certification, which is, you know, 10 tests that they have to take. Talking with Jerry, you know, they're working on their 14th year with Southwest Community Act and Council. They've worked eight years now with the Lincoln County Opportunities Center for Form of Maintenance. Some of the kids are doing lots of hands-on there. He took a group of kids back in the fall to the University of Technical Institute, which is a NASCAR. We had a student last year that when they went down to visit, come back, dedicated himself to that program and is, hopefully will finish that up. And he has another student or two that's probably interested in going that route as well. We have several students that just got certified to do state inspections, which is a big thing. And then earlier this year, I put Jerry's class along with several others to Charleston, and we set up to do what's called a Minority Business Expo, where we showcase some of our students. We did the nursing program, Jerry's, and welding, and kind of exposed those kids. And I sort of just sat in the background, answered all the questions for some of the businesses that had no idea what we do with our CTE. So this was a good opportunity for them to get out there and showcase what they had. So I shared a couple of pictures with you from the UPI with the NASCAR and the students. The others are LC Farms, which are ag programs. We started making a fall, they're busy making apple butter. I actually purchased a 75 gallon pot for them, and they really enjoyed that because they didn't have to make so many, have so many little pots going in order to get them to dig. So that was a very good activity for the students. We had a lot of those students that participated there. They also went to Milton when they had the fair over there and participated with it, selling the apple butter and so forth. So it was a good little business experience for them. In the summer there, they've had the state FFA competition, the FFA convention that they went to. I showed, there's a picture in here that I shared with them. We have our students that participated in our fair and took a group of kids for their new officer training. And then since school started, Seth's been pretty busy over there with taking students to an event in Morgantown, our leadership in Ripley, tractor driving competitions, and the apple butter. Kids been in the high tunnel. We have a picture of one of our students there doing the ham and bacon process. Wish they enjoyed that, and the kids shared with me their experience. We did the fall auction. Things are coming up. It'll be like every second Tuesday of the month, we'd meet with the alumni, FFA week or some of the things. Get ready to order seeds for the greenhouse and have that up and running here shortly. There's horse judging competition and land judging competition coming up towards the spring. In the picture there, you see the Campbell County Fair. There's several of our students that entered that and actually had won some ribbons for prizes that they got first place. So I was really pleased with that. They also won first place for record keeping as well. They're planning for their chapter banquet, and that'll be coming up towards the spring. They're looking to do a spring career development event in Morgantown, and the kids will be planning for the spring auction and the public speaking contest coming up. Several other things you see that's there with the Creed Public Speaking. And there's a picture there of the students that went to the National FFA Convention in Indiana. Some of the things we look at is possibly down the road is some financial need for our ag mechanic building. We have $20,000, great money that I've received towards that. And we have to kind of get an idea of what size building we want. In fact, we're going to put it at thanks to, we may need some help financially with that. I wouldn't think it'd be a lot of money. Electric in the blue building out back, it would be very helpful to have some electric out there because we do use that building for several events, if we could get that put in style. And then possibly maybe increasing Mr. Neal's days from 2:20 to at least maybe, at least like 2:30. Give him a few more extra days since he's staying so busy with these kids. Just something to think about. Gerald TC lives on the next page. They've been pretty busy competing in the raider competition. They have one here at school. They've been in marksmanship competitions. They completed online academy competitions. They did a number of Call of Guard events throughout the year with the, you know, football games and soccer. Several folks that we've had come into school and speak, our guest speakers. They do that to help with Veterans Day. They've been out about, helping support some things in the community. Example would be the Help Run the Mud River Rifle Range Community Event that's held yearly.
Mr. Snodgrass is chairing with me with the drill team, his name's Jamie.
2018.
Yes, I just won the.
Saturday.
Saturday, just Saturday.
First time they've, first time they've.
Yes. That was something just happened. I had to put it on there for you, but I just want to share that with you. Yeah, that's okay. Our carpentry guys, they've been busy. They've helped out with hanging some stuff in the building, designing some things, and still working on the soccer building as we need to. They did, they've been doing some masonry work, preparing the walls. One of the things that we did this year is we partnered with the Carpenter Union out of Charleston, sent a group of students up there on a field trip to the Carpenter Union. They have an apprenticeship program. Something good that's coming out of this is this Friday coming up, which is not on there. And I just finally got it worked out here in the last couple of days, is that on February the 2nd, Carpenter Union has asked that we bring up a group of students, they like have about 15, to take what's called the tape test, and they're going to work with them on resume writing for a little bit. If the kids are successful with the tape test, that's going to give them an opportunity to look at their apprenticeship program. Then on the 16th, they have that construction and trades fair, which is a job fair. So the guys that go up on the 2nd and take the test, the tape test and the resume, they're to bring that back on the 16th. There are going to be some employers there and opportunity for the apprenticeship program for these kids to be involved in it. They said we could bring a maximum number of 15. I have 15 students that have signed up and plan to attend that. Hopefully, there'll be some jobs that these kids can be qualified for. They start out at about $15 an hour with some benefits. So that's pretty good. I've been on the phone multiple times, got in touch with the maintenance guy who delivers over Beach Ford. Dillard Price, excuse me. And I'm going to have a meeting with him on Thursday, and it's about the new park and recreation. He's wanting to come out and meet, and we're going to throw some ideas around what some of our kids can help, whether it's picnic tables, it's just something small, but there's other things that he would mention to me on the phone that he may like our kids to be involved with.
You know Dillard?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, because we got to talking to him, I was just like, I said, your dad's name's Tennis, isn't it? He said, yeah. I said, I don't care, I know you. I said, you remember me? And after we got to talking, and he was a year or so behind us at school, so that worked out pretty good. That's, I think that's going to be good for our students. And then the mayor had contacted me here the last few days. He's interested in our kids coming over, working on taking some of the shelters that we have and upgrading those. And I do a few other little things around town, just kind of dress it up and make it a little more presentable. And I mentioned that to you guys yesterday, Bill, that was something we possibly could do. Our Panther preschool, which is our early childhood program. They're working on their student teaching. Couple of days a week, they started back in September. The seniors, they're moving to a four-day week. They're working on their portfolio and capstone. Students have been assisting with the teen program. Senior class, they would like to plan a trip to go to WVU, check out the College of Education Human Services and the Child Development Lab. They have a fantastic facility there with early childhood. Students are working to get certified in their ECAD, which is Early Childhood Classroom Assistant Teacher. So when they get through the program, they can actually just go to work. One highlight we had just recently here last week was, we had a lady that came from the Department of Ed and visited with us as a surprise walk-through. And one of the programs that she looked at was our early childhood program. And she was really pleased with how things were going in there, that the students stepped up and took control, shared with her. Brittany Webb, I don't know if you guys know Brittany, but she's actually the classroom leader at the moment. So she went through everything that they do within the class and how the simulated workplace is set up. And the only thing they really dinged us for was we didn't have a current evacuation plan for the whole building. Since her class is on that end, it's either like turn out the door and go out the building. So she said we just needed to update that, but everything else was positive. Our Panther Way Healthcare, Ms. Elquins' class, they were part of the group that went for the Minority Business Expo. They have their HOSA Fall Leadership Conference, 13 seniors and four juniors attended that. Something exciting that came about from this is that we have a 2018 West Virginia HOSA T-shirt contest winner, which is one of our juniors, which is Autumn Gibson. No background in graphic design or anything like that, but she designed her 2018 HOSA shirt that everybody will be wearing. And I thought that was pretty cool that our kids were one of them that got selected. We've had a couple of blood drives this year. They helped with the flu shot clinic. Students went to the health fair, they did the chili fest. They went to Southern and visited part of a day up there. Been working on some stuff with Andy Watson, the Director of Organizational Development and Learning. And this is St. Mary's Hospital. We've talked with them and we've got to meet with them again for possibly some of our students that would come down and do something like job shadowing in the different areas within the hospital. So kind of give them an idea of what they would be interested in, other than, you know, they may not decide that, you know, nursing is the way to go. But by going through our classes, they would have the knowledge to understand that there's other jobs in there that they would probably fit into. They may want to work in the lab or be a phlebotomist or something of that nature. So that's something I'm hoping that we can work out. The folks have sent me a contract that we were supposed to read over here recently. But I got to meet back with them to find out the, everything about that before we, we'd like to move forward with that.
Better do it quickly before Cavalloneka takes over.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, so I'm thinking that's going to be something that's pretty good. Joanne's going to go meet with the lady here in the next few days for an evening meeting and see how that works out. Some of the things with our blood drive, and I showed some pictures with you there, the chili fest. Our students won the school award. So wanted you to see what they're doing, actually. We had a tailgate for a football game earlier in the fall. Panther Way Healthcare there, the girls photo, they had a photo of them. We have the, you know, we made us a banner and students game, and we cooked, and they really enjoyed that. Our Panther Publishing, they've been fairly busy this year. Our student Andrew there, he's making programs. We've did a little bit of everything for making our student activity passes to reunion programs, sports covers, the apple butter labels, brochures, movie tickets, Christmas calendars, bus passes. On the next page, there's a couple of flyers that the students put together and showcased. So they do real good work. We've actually have some outside folks that have contacted them that they've actually did flyers for and business cards and some things that kind of surprises me when I talk to these people, they're like, oh, yeah, no idea that you guys can do that. Yeah, we're like the best kept secret in Lincoln County there. But I just wanted to share with you a few things that they do. And then on the next page is one of our students from that class. This is Sarah Mayberry. She's a senior. Back in the fall, she won a contest. She designed the state cross-country meet logo for the upcoming event. So it's the program cover design. And she's one of those students that, you know, no graphic design background, anything of that nature. Just working with Ms. Frazier there in class, and I thought that was pretty neat. Our kids took that honor. LCH Peacemakers is the next one, our law and public safety. Sure picture of the juniors and the seniors in that group. Here recently, they've been working on blood splatter. There's quite a bit of information that you can gain from the blood splatter. And they do, with lots of math that comes involved. So the students participate in that. I showed a couple of other pictures there with just as well with the, they did crime scene and gathering evidence. They even took Officer Lawrence's car and fingerprinted it. I thought that was pretty neat. And they were in the process of getting a simulator for his class. And I've worked on getting incentive grant, so I got an incentive grant for $15,500. And I have to talk with Mr. Neal to give there about coming up with some other money. So I think it's going to be a little less, I told you, $3,500, less than the overall price for it. Because I think we're going to acquire another $2,700 from an outside agency that could possibly help with that as well.
That's for the computer modules, isn't it?
Yeah.
Work with it?
Yeah. It's a, when you get it set up, it's like 10-foot, 14-foot screen, and it's very interactive. It puts you right in a situation from everything, from somebody trying to steal a bike to, you know, shootout. So these kids will have firsthand experience of what it's like to be there, and it's interactive. I actually got to play with the, I won a cattle hunting for a little bit one day. And I was just like, our kids definitely need that. And the good thing is that we can, we can have other folks come in and train on it as well. It's going to be, it's going to be that good. So like at the town of Hamilton, we're bringing their police officers over, or the service department, state troopers, they won't have to go off somewhere to do that. They could, they could come here and we could let them use that for small donations.
This is a state-of-the-art system, isn't it?
Yes.
As good as you're going to find probably even in the private sector here.
Yeah, the next one too, that is like, it's about $42,000. The one we're looking at is roughly about 25, but I think we're going to be able to get it for about 23. The one that the Police Academy and stuff use, it's about $45,000. So it's just like it's the next upgrade for this. So we'll be state-of-the-art with some of our technology and things. And another thing that we've added to the classes, they have a virtual simulator. Tim, what is that?
They have the virtual range. It's a VR system, but it has two sensors, it's an HTC body.
Okay. Yeah, so you. Yeah, so you put the helmet on and you get the scenario around you. So our kids are getting the latest, you know, what's out there. So we're hopefully going to be a step ahead of some other folks, is our goal. I showed some other pictures there with you too, the murder scene. Actually got to be a part of that back there when the kids did that. They wanted me to see what they were doing. So they threw the dummy off the, there's railing, simulated somebody falling off of a building and for being pushed off of the building. And then, and then they had to work backwards to try to figure out where they were standing and so forth. So that's, that's pretty good. Straight A welding and fabrication. We've partnered with the Carpenter Union because they came and actually wanted to look at just basically construction. But then they got to realize that we have several pretty good students that are going to be qualified as welders. So they want to partner with us as well, give those kids an opportunity. There's about four of them that's going to go up on Friday and then on the 16th to participate in this job fair activity. So I'm hoping that works out best for them. We did the street fair. They've been working on some various projects that folks have brought in from within the community that they've worked on. One of our big things right now is we've been invited to become an AWS, American Welding Society. Society Accreditation Secondary CTE. There's only two in the state that have that. We've had the past couple of years, real good job placement rankings. So that's kind of got some attentions from Rick Gilman, which is that West Virginia Department of Ed. And I filled out the paperwork and I'm sending it in, I'm just waiting on them to get back. I have to send it to Florida for us to work on it. They are working with me to pay for everything. The only thing we might have to do is pay for some of this stuff upfront and then we're going to get reimbursed for what money we spend. And it's going to be a good opportunity for us to do that. Once we become an American Welding Society Accreditation side, there's a few incentives that come with that. One is the recognition, two, that our students will leave here and be able to put that on their resume when they go to work for somebody. It also gives us the opportunity for Mr. Jones to become a certified welding inspector. So that's another certification that the students can work on that graduate from us is he will be able to certify them. And that'll make them a little more, let's say, job ready when they go out. They won't have to, company won't have to send them somewhere to do this, we can already do that in-house. I've talked with a few places around it. If this works out and we're able to do that, they would love to send their folks here to be trained and welded. We can also use that as a fundraising money or way to generate money for a welding program. And it also establishes some new contacts for us, for our students in terms of getting on to getting a job. So I'm kind of looking, looking forward to that. There's a little bit of work involved. I did a ton of paperwork and trying to make this happen. I talked to Mr. King about some money and going ahead and paying for a few things upfront because we're going to get our money back from this. We're also looking to purchase a CNC plasma cutting system. I worked on incentive grant, got it for, I was hoping to get more, but I only got eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. It's about a twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment. It does have some computer programming with it and some places around look for, if we can come in and have a little bit of a background in programming things. So hopefully this can give our students an opportunity to be able to maybe pass somebody else up that don't have that in terms of finding them a job down the road. We'll get that order for long. And with that, we can, we can make all kinds of things. We can make brackets if we needed to for automotive, you know, plus the kids will get that experience with it. And additional programming, I've talked with Mingo Central, they have this in place. They're willing to share some of their programming with us. So that'll give us a tad, a little bit of an upper hand, a jumpstart of getting kids interested in it, being able to use it and make things with it. On the last page are legions of computers, our Vex robotic, our students are in our project lead away. Talked with Mr. Harshberger, they've been working on programming. They've been using the Wii, the Playstation Four, the Xbox One, doing some programming with it. He showed me they've been making some apps. They've started their artificial intelligence. They've got their Nano Bot, which is the big bot in the cosmos, the little bot. I had to explain to him, show me which was what. It's kind of neat and listen to and play with them and kids seem to really enjoy it. They've got some of the younger kids involved too, which have been on middle schools or come over and participate. They went to the Shelby County High School Rocket Rumble, they took first place. Our other kids with the, participated and got the Rocket Sportsman's Life Award. One of Mr. Harshberger's students was Terry Agins, he'd been working on a grant. It's up to four thousand dollars for the radio club that they have. And he told me that he would love to work with our, like our nine-one-one dispatch to create, he called it a mesh network for emergency communication. If something would go down, you'd still be able to communicate if you didn't have a phone or so forth, that you could do it with the radios that they have. They just recently qualified with our Vex qualifiers. They had several trophies. This just happened over the weekend that they shared with me. They had, they won the tournament trophy, robot skills championship, the excellent award. So pretty much they're guaranteed that their senior team will be at states. And then they're, they're working on some other things that hopefully get one of their other teams there. And then we were talking about earlier that, on the radio there with the interview with Tyler Hoffman, that was on WQBE. And I guess he had shared with them some information and it was something you guys talked about a bit ago, which is good. A lot of people don't know some of the things that we do here, but it's, it's good that we have that opportunity to have our kids speak up on behalf of things that they do to get us recognized for, you know, what we can do and help them out. Any questions?
Lot of information there, Mr. Tyler. Hey man, have you comments, questions?
We have a lot going on, so we're.
Okay, keeping up with everything.
Oh, it's, it's busy, it's busy. I told Jeff yesterday, sticky notes, not computers.
Jeff knows all about sticky notes.
Yeah, I was admiring his, me and him talking.
No, I, you know, I think a couple of years ago, one of the board's concerns was that we weren't offering a lot of diversity in programs, in CTE program. And I believe that you guys have turned that around and I commend you, Mr. Snyder, and he's involved in that really, he's done an excellent job there. I do want to ask you one question, it's kind of under, semi-related. I know on the soccer field, they're hoping to do some work on the field this spring. And spring's getting closer now, sometimes we wonder. And also, but my question is, is the ag class going to help with the seeding of the soccer field and the football field? Do you know that?
I haven't talked to Seth about it. I don't know, but I'd be able to.
If at all possible, we'd like for some assistance on that because part of the, you know, as you know, part of the football field's been seeded, but the other areas haven't been. And we're always hoping that maybe we could get some assistance from the ag class. And I know with Mr. Plumby, he made up a presentation, presentation to us earlier in the fall about some things we want to do around the soccer field, the entrance and this, that and the other. And one of the things, we involved the field itself, bringing in more dirt and, you know, make that more level and then seed it. So I didn't know whether they had discussed that, but I think Mr. Snyder's like there shaking his head, he must know something about it.
Okay.
Okay, that was just, sometime came to mind for me.
Okay. But now we could help out if needs be, if they could save, save some money.
We, I think we'd appreciate if you could help both. Mr. Snyder knows about it.
Just get us whatever material we need. We'll help take care of it.
We appreciate it. Like I say, it won't be long until we can plant a tank.
Yeah.
Thank you, man.
Oh, anytime.
Okay, next. I don't know who the main spokesperson, if there is one or not, but we have Rhonda Kersey, Tim Elliott, and Dana Snyder, and Matt Miller again, that'll talk about the Appalachian Regional Commission grant. So everybody's coming over. Rhonda, who am I?
Oh, I guess I can all know that.
And for those that may not know, this is now Dr. Kersey, we commend you on that accomplishment.
All right. The ARC grant is offered by the Appalachian Regional Commission. It was brought to me by Tim earlier this year. I've been working on it, working on, finally, you get some information. And what the program entails, it's Appalachian Regional Commission works on different areas. For example, a couple of years ago, they wanted to work on making sure that there were cell towers everywhere so that the internet and all that, you know, the, all that good stuff.
Communication.
Thank you, my mind went blank.
Check him there.
Yeah, all of that was in place. However, when Governor Justice came in, he saw that there's some changes needing to be made, especially with the coal mines shutting down. So, you know, he put, wanted to do everybody to work. So now he, what he wants is, you know, everybody, not just those who left the displaced workers from the coal mines, but the ones that, in the trickle-down effect. The displaced workers from the towns where the grocery store had to close or the machine shops that had to close that were working with them. So what he was saying was coal miners weren't the only ones that were displaced. So when that came about, Appalachian Regional Commission changed their mindset. So one of the goals they wanted to do was send out grant, you know, get grant money and put out the programs that will help those displaced workers get back in. So Tim brought to me a whole list and a whole packet of stuff to put together for a Lincoln County Community CTE program. And what this program would entail is offering almost all the CTE classes that we offer during today in the evening. Allowing workers that are needing to have retraining, certification, to come in, become welders, become certified in construction or our help programs, our ad programs, or, you know, whichever program that would enable them to become certified as something, somebody else or something else, to get out and be able to work. So we have been working on this grant and what we have done, and what I've given you in your blue folders, first explains what ARC is. And some of the, their policies. They, they want to do the training and technical assistance, planning and research, and the education and capacity building. Well, right there, that's where we have fallen under, really is number three. And part of number two on their, their golden objectives. So what they have, what I've given you, you don't have to look them all right now, it's just, you know, it's about how, how it works, what has to be done. It is a match grant, but the match can be done in kind. And it's only limited to counties that are distressed, are capable, or in need. And each of those matches represent, it's like eighty, eighty, sixty, and fifty percent. Well, because of where we are, Lincoln County, we are considered distressed. So we only have a twenty percent match that we have to do in kind. That in kind can entail the school classrooms that we use. If buses are used, that's considered in kind. Equipment that is used is considered in kind. So all of that would be equal to our twenty percent of whatever we, whatever we propose this grant to be. So using the numbers and the ideas that Tim gave me, you know, we worked, worked on several different areas that students would become certified or adult students would become certified. And those areas are actually listed under your, the executive summary. I believe that's our project description and the outfit, I apologize, it is in the next one, under the project narrative. Am I forgetting something?
He was talking about one of the partnerships.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I have forgotten the partnership here.
You're fine.
Just smiling on that.
Smiling on, smiling on, uh-huh, you know. In our project description, it just tells what we have planned on doing. We want to offer an opportunity for displaced workers in the community work and through retrain. Our project descriptions for the seven that we want to work on is actually on the next page. That explains the integration and transition of all the activities and programs that we want to offer, what they will entail, what the descriptions are, and what those students or non-traditional students will be certified in. Did you not get that, Jeff?
I was going to be admiring to show that.
Oh, sorry.
So you could follow along.
I'm sorry.
Imagine again. Thank you.
In this, in this narrative, and this is the narrative that will be going to the commission as part of the grant. So it has been worked, I have, it's been sent off and it's been, it's gotten back to me so that I've worked with, my mind just went blank. His name is David and he works for Mission West.
David Mardre for Mission West.
Yes, thank you. Name, first name's I'm good, but sometimes it's the last name, I forget. But this covers all the different areas that we are going to offer in this program. One of the reasons we believe that we have a really great chance of getting that, this program or this grant, is because of the unemployment rate here in our county. Currently, it is, according to what I had just gotten when I was writing to us, five point five percent. Now, that's, it was one of the highest in the counties, they were ranked number seven as the highest. So that's one of the reasons I think that we have a good chance. They look at one of those types of rationales. And, you know, we were just talking about all the great positive things we were doing in this county. You know, our schools are doing so well and as Mr. King says at times, you know, we are the best kept secret because we have so many great things going on. And here I am, bringing in some negative information. But our, it's our goal to turn that negative information into a positive by offering these programs through our county, not just for our citizens, but, you know, out through the other areas, Logan County, Boone County, even Putnam County, Collin County, because those are areas as well that could feed into this program as well and gain certification and get out there and help our workforce.
Rodney, when we discussed this, I was going to round back. Was it twenty-five, was that the number we thought for program? Was that kind of the number we based?
Twenty to twenty-five?
Yes.
Yes.
We have room, we're spacing out.
And one of the, one of the programs we want to do is have a split ag program to help with Seth. And this person would come in in the afternoons, work with students that are in, in class in school from twelve to three, and then come back and work four to seven, you take a little, this dinner break, come back at four to seven and work with the non-traditional students. Now, Tim can explain more as to what that program would be than I can.
Tim?
Then take his cue.
Sorry, I apologize. With that one, what we were looking at is modeling a little bit after Cabo Midland and Cabo County Career Tech and try to work with MCTC on a partnership with a veterinary technician position to where some of the students would actually attend the one-year class through mats with our vocational ag program. And then they would continue their last year of education with MCTC. And then that way, one year removed from Lincoln County High School, they would actually have an associate degree and a certification to be a veterinary and technician is what we were looking at with that program. And that would not only offer to our high school current students, but maybe some of the individuals that might be thinking about a career field that are outside going into the vet tech field.
And so one of the things that we've noticed with, I noticed when I was working on this is how narrow those opportunities are for these non-traditional students. We have the opportunities for them to go back to school, to get your associate's degree in accounting or business. We have the, they have the opportunity to get, you know, go on into education. However, we don't have, a lot of them do not have the opportunities in around this area to go in and get their CTE programs, the things that are needed just as much as anything else. You know, auto tech mode, auto mode of technology, the web-based coding, there's a lot of things that, right now, everybody knows, we all use our phones. Coding and web and app design, those are all becoming popular. Construction, plumbing, all of those are jobs that, well, every one of us has needed every now and then, one of those type of workers to come in and do something for us. And they're not, those positions are not as popular anymore as getting your associate's degree in business and accounting. So this offers a wider opportunity for those non-traditional students to go. So this offers a wider opportunity for those non-traditional students to go out and get that certification. Now, as he alluded to, we are having, we're working on collaborative partnerships. Some of those, it would include Southern Community, Mount West, of course, Lincoln County Schools, and possibly Bridge Valley Community College. We've also have MOUs right now currently with our CTE programs with WBU and Marshall. Are there any others that we have right now?
WBU, Parkersburg.
Yeah, the Parkersburg one. Is that it? Okay. So we already have several collaborative partners that are working with us. The only, you know, by adding another program just enhances the opportunities. The last page pretty much tells you what we're, the monies that we're looking at. This grant, this budget proposal is just for one year. This is a three-year grant that's renewable. So we're looking at a possible plus to nine hundred thousand at the end of the three years, with our twenty percent, of course, going maybe a hundred and seventy thousand. However, like I said, you know, that sounds like, oh my gosh, that's a lot. But when you take into account the different equipment they're going to use, the classrooms are going to be used, possible transportation that'll be used, and when you're talking in kind on things, you also include what the electric will be, water, all that, you know. So that adds up, and that covers our in kind twenty percent. Have I left anything out? Am I quickly? Okay.
Looks like they are all.
Just continue, say for big back.
Oh, yeah. They told me they were going to smile and nod.
Mr. Snyder, so that does that very well. My motto is to have my hands on dust and my fingerprints on everything. Pretty good, Dan.
I like that. All right, I know I just summarized that quickly, questions?
Anybody? Now, what, I might have missed this. Do you have an idea of how many evening programs there might be?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Now, my only comment is I'm glad we're doing this once again. This is something that I know that you guys, most of us know, from years past, we offered evening classes, we called them vocational, different things at that time, but they were things that people learned various trades in the evening. And, you know, that's something that's been lacking for a long time, and I know that's something I've heard from different people, here Mr. Wilkerson in particular. It's why don't we do that anymore? And it looks like we're going to try to do it again. So, once again, I think that's another good area of things that, you know, trying to make diversity out of our county for various opportunities and people and careers, and you're hitting upon many of them that we didn't make enough. So, good luck on this grant, we'll hopefully, we very hopefully, we're able to accomplish that.
All right, the only thing I have to do is have Jim, check. My goodness, he must be calling me now. I've been trying to get ahold of Jim Bush from the Appalachian Regional Commission on another topic for about a week now, we keep missing each other. The only thing Jeff has to do is sign the MOUs and the other assurances, and this grant's ready to go.
Your application or grant?
The application.
Okay. Mr. McKibb, probably.
I'll have to bring him to you.
He's ready.
Okay?
All right, thanks, Ron, and everybody else who's coming today, appreciate that. That's great of you.
I have a blue folder.
Blue folder, friend.
Oh, yeah.
So Burton, I see you back there in the back, I overlooked you, I'll call you back there, glad to have you with us again.
Good seeing you. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the administrative section, please. Do you have a motion, look at those? Brad Baker made the motion, second by, Mr. Curry, okay.
Thank you, dear. Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also have served as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer Item B, out-of-state trip for Hamon PAH students to Louisville, Kentucky, May the twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. All expenses paid by group, and they're going to take a public charter with us. Item C, Marshall University nursing student Craig Mueller to perform clinicals under the supervision of school nurses, second semester. Item D, the following Marshall University students to perform observations, second Item E is the adoption of the following revised policies on review from December twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, at our website, our county website. That's our policy twenty-four twelve, our homebound slash hospital instruction program, and policy fifty-two hundred, which is attendance. Item F, out-of-state travel for the following personnel. Item G, adult student Jessica Johnson to ride school bus while enrolled in an adult education program at the county office.
Okay, do you might have any comments or questions about any of those things?
You know that I do.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Baker?
And my comment is, as to the attendance policy fifty-two hundred, I questioned that policy when it was first brought before us for consideration. I've talked at length to Mr. Pritchard, who has talked at length to many other attendance directors throughout the state. I still feel that while the goal behind that policy may have been a good and proper goal in terms of the drafting of that policy, didn't consider the, the drafters didn't consider the practical effects, and I think there's a lot of potential for problems for good students under this current policy. But our hands are tied. The law, yes, what the, what education is adopted, we can't modify it, all we can do is adopt it. So we will have to deal with that, and I hope that there will be, that there are appeals or an appeals process, there is an appeals process within the confines of that policy, and I hope that people understand that and are well aware of what can be done during that appeals process in the event that there is a legitimate absence for which an excuse isn't timely submitted. I, I know, think those appeals would go to Mr. Pritchard, who is well aware of my concerns and would, I think, apply a little bit of human kindness to the situation. So.
And we'll have a conversation with the principals as we're, my phone.
Does that particular policy go out as part of that paying vote for being recently eliminated?
Yeah, we've got part of the, the student.
And it's already in effect at some schools this year.
What I was thinking is, if they could accentuate that, whether or not what they're asking, there is an appeal process there, of all the many of them, it may be.
Having our kids in school and having the reforming policies to force them to be in school is a great thing, but there are legitimate reasons to be absent, and I, you know, I think having a three- or four-day mandatory period to submit a, an excuse upon three to four days after your return is just not reasonable in some circumstances. And, again, the appeals process exists, I hope the principals will also understand the effect of this and enforce it with the goal of attendance, not punishment in mind. So, that's my ten cents worth on this topic. With that, I'm finished.
All right. I think we can all understand where it's coming from, right? Okay, does anybody have anything else administrative? Is that an all yes on the administrative?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay. Let's go to the finance section, please, have a motion? Carol?
Sure.
Larry? Ray?
Schedule, what's the sum, seven hundred and three thousand and twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents in the tax. Got any questions, let me know. Accounting pension for the following retired employees, paid with excess level of funds listed. And the purchase of two, two thousand nineteen Bluebird seventy-seven passenger vision gasoline-powered conventional school buses with specifications listed on the tax sheet at a cost of eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Okay, I'm sure everybody recalls, the Cummings talking to us about these gasoline buses, anything to, in addition to that?
We're excited to be part of this pilot project for what, what, five counties, I believe?
Where are you managing?
Has the opportunity to participate.
Where are we going to fuel these buses? This is the only fuel station.
The buses would be in the Hamon area, so we'll use the gas.
Okay, thank you, sir.
But are we, are we being reimbursed for the cost of the buses, or is it?
Yes, through our normal reimbursement. Through the state aid fund.
Got it.
And Mr. McKibb, just so that I recall correctly, the price we're paying for these buses, is it much less than a comparable diesel bus?
It's comparable to the price of diesel, there's not that much difference.
So, remind me again, I should have had Mr. Cummings here, I apologize, the meeting where he discussed this, I believe I either attended or followed or missed that meeting.
It's the maintenance, the, the, keeping on the buses is going to be far less expensive on the gasoline-powered buses than the diesels.
In theory.
In theory.
But that's something we'll be monitoring and comparing to our newer, newer diesels before we buy more of the gasoline-powered buses.
Absolutely.
I guess that's the reason it's a pilot program, stay alive.
Yes. Yeah, I find this odd, apparently we wear a diesel engine out, you know, I mean, they just, they keep going and going and going and going. We all know what happens to gasoline-powered engines.
Yeah, I'm just really, and I'm glad that we're, we're a part of this program. I just have a real hard time understanding from a mechanical standpoint how a gasoline engine that produces the power to move a bus, start and stop hundreds of times a day, is going to last like a diesel engine with proper maintenance to it. It, it doesn't happen in the real world, you don't see gasoline-powered rigs out on the interstate, they're all diesels, they're putting five, six hundred, seven hundred thousand miles on the same engines that are in our buses, the exact same diesel engines. I realize it's a lot different, I, I had diesel, my personal diesel truck, it's a lot different when you hook up to a trailer and you haul two thousand miles, stopping every eight or twelve hours, than the start and stop nature of bus use. But it'll be interesting, and we're going to track, and we're going to track maintenance costs over the life of the bus with the gasoline versus diesel, is correct?
That's correct.
Because I want to see those, same when I'm still around, I, I want to keep an eye on that, because I just don't know how, how, I mean, maybe the gasoline technology in the bus industry has improved so much that they figured out things, the transportation industry and the railroad industry and all these other heavy maritime industries haven't figured out yet, so we'll see.
Time will tell. Seems like a step backwards to me.
I think so too, but we'll see.
I don't know enough to comment, so.
I mean, seventy-seven passenger buses are the same size as most of the buses we have out here, right?
Right.
Same way, the only thing different about them is a gasoline-powered train versus a diesel-powered train.
That's it.
I think the mechanics, you know, throw their two cents in, but the upkeep of them is, you know, it's.
We've got some issues with the newer, the newer buses in potentially.
Well, the newer diesels, if anyone owns a newer diesel vehicle, the emissions maintenance on them is a huge, it's a huge side of it, it's, it's not as cheap to own a diesel vehicle as it used to be. There are things that you have to keep on top of to keep them properly performing, but if you do, the diesel engines ought to last half a million miles. I know we don't get that out of ours, but the, the start and stop uses, I'm not pointing fingers at the mechanics or the maintenance, but start and stop usage of a bus, that's hard on any vehicle. This thing's going to be exceptionally hard on a gasoline engine, we'll see.
Since we're on a fifteen-year cycle now, school bus purchases, they better last a long time. Okay.
But you said these buses are going to be local, so when you put a couple thousand miles a year on it, right? You might get, you put forty thousand miles on a gasoline engine application, you might get fifteen years out of it, you put two thousand miles a year on it, maybe, maybe. Whoa, just tell me it's a Ford engine and a fleet, not a jet.
No, I don't know. I hope it is.
Okay, anything on the finance, any of the items with finance, any questions about any of those things, ready, just talk forward. Okay, is that an all yes on the finance, including the two buses? Okay, let's go to personnel, then, motion, please?
This is a sad day. I'm a.
We haven't got a vote yet.
Long-term substitute professional personnel.
Go ahead, Bill.
Item B, employment of substitute service personnel pending FBI, CIV, clearance and issuance of certification. Item C, employment of substitute service personnel pending completion of bus operator requirements, issuance of bus operator certification. Item D, transfer of service personnel. Item E, employment of curricular personnel. Item F, leave of absence. Item G, pull item one. Retirements and resignations. We beg.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
We're going to have to make an exception for voting on these items for G one, I just can't approve that.
We can always strike a five.
You're going to have to quit without our approval.
What a privilege it has been to work with this woman that's sitting here right now, this different woman. I've sat here for years, many years, I love my job, and, but it's time to retire and maybe rest a little. I've worked since I was nineteen years old, and I'm looking forward to it. I told Jeff that I would come and help him as many days as he wanted me to come and help someone else, I'd be glad to. But I want you all to know that I would really, really miss school.
Not as much as we're going to miss you.
Well, it's been such a privilege to work.
But it's not going to work.
If you're going to miss us, stick around another eight or ten years. If you're going to be bored, you are going to be bored in retirement. You're going to miss the hustle and bustle, work and all responsibility, I'm telling you, you're not ready. I don't, I don't care what you think, you're not ready.
That's what Mr. Wilkerson said.
Well, I think we all have the same sentiments here. We've been with Brenda for a long time, and some of us have, sure, and we've worked together, good times and bad, but her talents are extraordinary, and it's going to be hard to fill those shoes. Mr. McKibb is great at this day, I mean, for months, for months, he's talked to me, goes, you know, I've heard Brenda, Brenda might retire, he goes, oh, God. So, the other day, Brenda always sends me a agenda, I had a time to look at, and I saw that, and I immediately said, I wait a minute here.
King, hang this, he thought.
We are going to miss you, Brenda, you're not gone yet, so you're still here, but we want you to understand how grateful we are for all your service to this school.
It's been a pleasure, a real pleasure.
I got to quit, I couldn't, I'm not able to talk anymore. Bill?
Also abolish professional personnel posting central office, teacher of adult education. I'll explain that a little bit, we posted a long number of days, we put it back out at two forty. It's a grant-funded position, after talking to someone at the state today, they recommended that we put it back to two twenty. And we got a letter the other day, we're not sure we're going to get the grant money, we get that every year, but we will probably end up, we will post it at two twenty, hire that person, and if we don't know if we have the money, we will have to rip that person, but understanding that, you know, if we get the money in June, then maybe we'll be back to that position, so that's kind of where we are on that.
So, are we expecting then maybe the next agenda, we're going to abolish the one that's posted, this end, right, to two forty, and go to a two twenty?
Yes, sir. And also abolish service personnel position, have we done aid at, at Hards? If you remember, we had a situation at one of our schools that, where someone requested an aid, and we thought that child was going to go to another school, well, they didn't, so we were able to abolish, but we will be coming back asking for a halftime aid at that school to help.
That'll be this year?
It'll be this year, yes, sir. And if you look at our list, it's getting smaller, but we'll get a lot open for next year. The great thing is, we found certified math teacher in value. So, that's the great thing, we found a certified math or certified special ed, it's a good thing.
We'd be glad to see that work.
Yes, sir.
So, my teacher where, we have hired her, where I, well, hired a guy in value, is certified, I, I didn't see that on them.
Item B.
No, no, I saw the, the teacher on there, but I didn't see that she was actually certified.
Yes, sir, she graduated from Ohio University.
Because my, my daughter happens to be, my baby happens to be over there, and she really likes to substitute the ten minute right now. She made that clear to me today, that she didn't want to lose her current math teacher. So I got a text this morning after I dropped her off before school started, telling me that she really, telling me that she really wanted to, really liked her current math teacher, would like to keep her, so.
Well, and, and we understand that, and one of the things that Mr. McKibb and I discussed when we started doing, when we get a new teacher come in like this, we leave the other teacher there for a couple of days for transition, it makes all the difference in the world. It makes all the difference in the world of knowing who the kids are, and this is what the schedule is, instead of phoning somebody in there the first day, and, and that's really helped, so.
Well, and, and my comment was more a compliment to the long-term substance. And I think a lot of you all know, and is a, I believe, retiree, who, who was, came back in to help on a little more, longer-term basis, and the kids really like her. I'm sure that the new teacher will be wonderful.
Yeah, she was at Duval all last year, so, yeah, we, and she may end up somewhere else in math, away the math positions are, but that's all I have.
Well, uh, but we are glad that we're doing certified person, and I think, reminder saying, this is a person that's going to be with us. I think that's hard to know. It's to give the, they have ties here, and it'll be somebody that we hopefully will stay with us here. That's what we're after. Okay, all those in favor of the personnel, an all yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's go down to comments, board members. Anything, Sean, comments?
I, I just need to have a comment on the buses we're buying. I went back and looked really closely at the specs a moment ago, and this bus has a five-year unlimited-mile engine and transmission warranty. So, for five years on powertrain, at least, my concerns are unfounded. And also, Bill, just so you notice on the first page, it is a Ford powertrain, so there's a chance we'll never need that in that morning.
The other Chevy just starts putting computers on the tail, you know, when they read on the tow truck.
Yep, see, your hands are going to get cold when you look in the mouth.
You guys keep it up. You're on tape here.
Yeah, Ford stands for fixed and repaired daily, so.
On road day. Down on the road day, yeah.
I knew this was coming. When a bus breaks down, yell at me. I can tow it in with my truck.
You got a Chevrolet?
No, I wouldn't offer that, but he, I wouldn't offer that, but he can. Friends tend to break when you look up to anything over four or five thousand pounds on them old blue tires.
Are you guys done yet?
Yes, I am. I know my comment. Golly.
Okay.
Need to laugh everyone's.
Nobody has any more comments you're concerned with?
Not to that, Rod.
No, no, that was good there. Mr. McGee?
Real quick, I, we, we received our guidelines for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school calendar last week, and our calendar committee will be getting together here soon, I think week after next, to start developing a calendar for next year. So, I wanted to share with the board that our, our public hearing dates for the calendars will be February the twenty-seventh and March the sixth. And if all goes well, the board will adopt the calendar at the March twentieth board meeting. And then we have until May the first to submit it to the State Department for approval.
Okay, explain here, on the public hearing dates, are there going to be proposed ones?
Proposed calendars, as we've done in the past.
The public will have an opportunity to comment on the different proposed calendars, and then on March twentieth, we'll adopt the calendar based on, I'll be available into it.
Right.
Mainly.
Just as we had the last two years.
What you tell us the teachers and service personnel prefer from those calendars that meet by hearing.
And we have to run a legal advertisement, so we'll get that to you soon, Sean.
Already on the page for next week.
All right. Brenda's quick. We've just talked about this.
We work together this summer.
He's going to Missouri, then.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have any inputs with it or we don't?
Also, on, on March the twentieth, I want to check with the board to see if you'd be available for a student celebration at five p.m. I know it's, you know, ways out, but, but sooner we talk, the better.
When, that year?
March the twentieth, at five p.m. We've got the nice backfield day, our gun writers, ROTC champions, drill champions, our robotics team. Bell B, thank you.
Now, the robotics team's actually including one that's still involved in acting as competition bike?
Right.
Okay.
So, if that day and time works, or that time, I guess.
Everybody can check. Now, is that a scheduled board meeting or not?
It is.
All right.
That's all.
All right. Um, the next item will be the superintendent's presentation of his evaluation of the year. This will affirm executive session as required. As you all know, back in prior September fifteenth each year, the board sets goals for the superintendent. Today, we'll have the opportunity to, uh, share with us how he feels he's done on those goals. And then, uh, you know, in a couple of weeks, uh, we will then do our evaluation of superintendent for this year. And the last year of a superintendent's contract, that must be done before March the first. So, our schedule is a little bit earlier this year than it is in a different year when the superintendent's contract is not out. So, at this time, let's take a couple of minutes before we start, and then we'll go into executive session. Okay, cut. Um, let's just go ahead and do that now, and, uh, and then we'll rest for a second then start. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for the presentation of the superintendent's evaluation? Assistant Mr. Whip, of course, he makes it. Mr. Baker seconded it. It's two sixteen p.m. All yes to go into executive session?
Yes.